That's always the first thing on the agenda. Are there any agenda modifications, Pam?
I would like to make a motion to add approval for the June seventh meeting minutes circulated rather late this afternoon along with the July nineteenth special meeting minutes also circulated late this afternoon, so if nobody's had a chance to review them, if you prefer to do it at next meeting, I would chime in.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And did you all get that? Were you able to read those?
I was ready.
I haven't read yet.
So, do we want to do that at the next meeting?
We'll do it at the next meeting, so everyone has a chance to.
Okay, I agree.
Public safety, do we have someone here from the police or the fire? No. Public forum, anyone here to speak in public forum? Okay. Is Emily here from Tadzioria? No. First District is walking here? No.
Can we get the First District right here?
District five. Anyone here from District five? City Plank, Mark Matthew. District three. Anyone here from District three?
You have to recruit tonight.
Seventy-seventh District. Mark here?
Mark, no, I saw Mark. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thirty-eighth District, Aurora?
Yeah, that's me.
Hey!
Hi, everyone. I haven't been here for a few months, so I just wanted to come and give a brief update from the California State Senate. I represent Senator Blakespear. She just has a small slice of French Penasitos, but I still wanted to let you know.
But it's an important slice.
It is, yes. So, you probably.
Where is that spice? Sorry, where is that spice?
I can send you the link.
Oh, I will.
Yes, on her website. There's a mirror I can have, and I can actually put it here on her. But, so the legislature ended before this session. Right now, Governor Newsom has hundreds of bills that were waiting for him to either sign or veto. If you wanted to know, eleven hundred bills were sent to him this year. He has until October fourteenth to either sign or veto them, and if he does veto a bill, his office will release an explanation as to why. My boss has passed, she's had four bills that have been signed. She's still waiting three. I can give you more details about them, but one protects workers from harassment. She has a couple gun violence prevention laws, and then she also has a housing bill that cuts some red tape. So, in addition, I did want to invite you all to a end the homelessness summit that she is hosting on October twenty-sixth. I emailed a flyer to Brian, so I hope he'll circulate it all amongst you. If you're interested, we're going to have three different panels who are talking about housing and homelessness and how this can be addressed in our communities. The mayor, John Gloria, will be there as well as a council member, Joe Lecava. Since both of them are your representatives, please feel free to come. We are asking that people RSVP. It's going to be in Carlsbad at the Dove Library. But, I'm sorry, I don't have a paper flyer, but I'll make sure that Brian can send that e-flier out to everyone. If you've got any questions about that, please let me know.
Will there be any discussion of this Sunbreak Ranch?
Oh, is that what you're talking about tonight? I know my miss came out yesterday for my top phone.
Oh, great. That's really great to know. I'm sure it will come up. It's supposed to
be interactive, so audience members will be involved as well with panelists, so it could come up definitely.
What's the date of the meeting?
October twenty-sixth. It's Thursday.
At the Carlsbad?
Yeah.
Oh, hey, I'm in District.
Yeah, that's great. I'll leave some words too, so please feel free to call me or email me, and I can send the information to you directly.
Thank you.
It's right here.
Thank you. Okay, Senate District forty. Mark?
Yeah, I talked to Mark for just a minute. He's not coming.
Okay.
Don't they have a big meeting tonight? Yeah, a big, a big turnout. It's upstairs three twenty. Where was that at? I don't know. Yeah, Trina. Yes, for Trina.
Okay, Fifty-second District. Priscilla? Okay, moving to announcements. Mary?
Yes. Yes, we are hosting, the Land Use Subcommittee is hosting a roads crossing community meeting on October twenty-fourth from five thirty to seven thirty at the Regent Penasitos Library. The devolver, Just Pam and Keith plan to come to the meeting and present a slideshow with information, renderings of the plan, and the purpose is to allow the community to be informed, and we will comment comments and any questions from the devolver, so that they have an opportunity to respond first to the community. And as I said in the previous email, it's not the only time they plan to come. They agreed to come additional times to here, and also to the.
Do you think you'll have a big crowd and you won't fit in that room?
I do think it's going to be tight.
Is there any, is it, will it be a, I guess overflowed, is it possible there could be a broadcast, maybe on question and answer, perhaps?
You'd have to ask Brian before you could do anything like that.
Well, yeah, that would have been a good idea. I don't know.
But that's not our event, right?
No, it's the Land Use. No, it's the Land Use.
So, it's a Land.
It's hosted by the Land Use.
I don't, I was asking, not necessarily a Zoom where people ask questions, but at least so people could.
Yeah, it's not as big as this room, but this room is being used, so we can't use it. This doesn't pre-empt Elsseton.
If you say this is bigger than the library room, what is the capacity of this room, do you think, for people?
There'll be chairs as you can get in here, but that's what.
You don't have a choice. You don't have a choice right now, that's.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
And the technology's better in the library.
Yeah.
Better presentation.
A comment, is if you can get a way of, if you can find a way of making it.
We've already looked at a lot of different places.
Places.
Mary did, a lot of people did, and that's, that's the only one that's really in the community that's.
Yeah, I, I think it's the best place to go.
For the subsequent meeting, there will likely be consultants there that can answer more in-depth questions, and so that will give us some time, give Mary some time to explore, see how this venue plays out, and then if it turns out that the subsequent meeting would be better held somewhere else, that would give us some time to explore that.
Let me make another question. Is some, sometimes the subcommittees take minutes, don't they? Is that up to the subcommittee to decide whether they want to take?
Yeah, what about? What about the minutes?
I mean, the minutes for this, for this.
Yeah.
So.
To distribute minutes.
Oh, okay.
Distribute minutes.
I wasn't sure what the question was. Where's the, do they give minutes?
Have someone take minutes or?
I can tell you that there are two, two realtors have agreed to advertise some people, so there will be a lot of information out there, so I do expect that it will be, and you know, it could be, it's a good point. Yes.
Okay, so, just to make sure I'm here, what I'm hearing, so this is a Land Use Committee meeting?
It's a community meeting hosted by the Land Use Committee.
Hosted by that Land Use, okay.
So, is it an official Land Use Committee? I don't know. Someone would have to.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think it is.
It's, it's, it's.
It's supposed to be.
And they will come back for whatever board meeting later on.
Okay, well, that was kind of a subsequent question. What is the kind of the timeline here? When, when will the Land Use Committee vote on this item?
Not until after they.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Not until all the information is available. This is only the second review, the, the second submitted by the applicant, so.
So, back.
I don't know, it could be six months, could be, we're, we're six to eight months from, from power environmental impact report, so there's lots of time.
Yeah.
When you think you're.
So, in between, hold on. So, so this is one of maybe a few informational meetings hosted by the Land Use Committee. Got it, understood. And, and what happens when, I'm interlocking here, but if we change organizations.
Please have me.
With bylaws.
If we, if our bylaws changes. Are we still?
We don't.
Partying in that.
There'll still be, there'll still be a recognized group for the community that would go down.
No, we'll bring that up when we get to bylaws.
And I think we'd still be willing to present just for informational purposes if that's what it ends up being.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did, have we heard, like, latest cycle issues come back at Pam, or?
They have not, so they're, they're very late on recycle issues. We're waiting on probably three departments at this point. Our planning consultant will be back tomorrow. She's in Europe right now. She'll be back tomorrow, and she's going to push hard to say, come on, guys.
Turn it over.
Yeah, so I'd really like to have them in hand before this library meeting, because we've submitted a traffic report, and there's some information that I think would be useful, but I don't want to present it until we've heard what the city has to say about it.
Who's doing your traffic?
Um, we have. I'm sorry?
L O N G.
No, no, it's Chen Ryan.
Chen Ryan.
Yeah, they don't really go by Chen Ryan anymore, but that's probably.
Yeah, C E R.
That sounds, yeah, yeah. Jonathan Sanchez is our, is our lead, lead guy.
Gotcha, thank you.
Do you know when your scoping letter might come out?
I'm going to say six months.
So, um, to your, um, the goal, and I've had a conversation with Pam about this, the goal will be to collect the comments. Hopefully, by providing people a chance to actually write them down, actually before we even start taking them, sort of organize the chaos. That's the goal. Also, another community who approached me about, they are sending information out as well, and collecting comments and questions from, from the people who bothered to sign up and write the comments, because they also plan to, to provide those to us. That's their, their hope is to collect the information from the community. They asked me if we were doing that, and I said we don't have a mechanism to do that. So, this group has formed and is collecting comments from the community. So, full disclosure, that's all that I've been consulted on that, just to make sure that all the information is coming.
Thank you.
You'll see that, you'll see that those flyers coming out from there to be able to advertise the meeting and advertise the opportunity for people to ask questions and comments.
You probably should get something, so someone blew the link on our website, or the town, even the town council, and, and know about, and know the particular details about.
That's a great idea. I have not done it, so whoever, whoever, can I do that?
A median.
Perfect.
Thank you, Bertha.
Anything else?
Um, don't.
Okay. Chairs report, Brian's not here. Vice Chair, I have a report.
Oh, I did have a Land Use.
Yeah, well, that's.
Okay, sir.
Secretary. Land Use Committee.
Okay.
There you go.
I do have one Land Use announcement via, to them. I just wanted to brief.
Can that have the very important information that I can forward on what's going on?
Um, I handed out just a little brief sheet, just because you can go on their website and learn more about them. I had not, I was not aware really of Sunbreak Ranch until Saturday, when I was watching the news and saw, you know, what, what they're proposing at Miramar. They were having a community meeting at the Beach Communities. The Beach Communities had organized a community meeting in Mission Beach on Monday night. So, the notice was Saturday, so I went on Monday night, just because couldn't, I, I really was quite stunned when I saw what they were proposing on TV. So, what I handed out is the first page, it's kind of a aerial that shows the location. I've kind of done a little sun symbol. It's right at the end of Miramar Way where it, it ends at Interstate fifteen. It's just to the east, direct in alignment with the, the, what do you call it, Tarpon Avenue?
And then the runway.
The runway, thank you. So, that's where they're, they're proposing this. Sunbreak Ranch is kind of headed out by five men. George Mullen, who has been a gentleman downtown, he's always been involved in the Rotarys. He's kind of defines himself as a self-made Renaissance man, and he is involved in real estate, and he's involved in, he's got, he thinks, he takes on big issues and tries to resolve problems, and, and he lives downtown, works downtown. Bill Walton, our basketball star, who lives in Mission Hills and who's been very vocal, you've probably seen him on numerous news reports about the homeless, because he's, they've got a lot of homeless issues in Mission Hills. Brian Castor, Richard Bailey, and Rick Sweeney. I don't know a whole lot about Castor and Bailey, but Rick Sweeney lives out in La Mesa, and La Mesa also has homeless issues, as, as every area does. But what they're proposing is a five-hundred-acre site at that location that they would lease for a dollar a year from the military, and they made representations at the meeting that a Colonel with Seabees, which is a division, I guess, of the Navy, had said that they could come on-site and they could build a tent city to house the homeless. Their main goal is to get a one-central location, a triage center, they're calling it, one central location where all the homeless would be placed, to get them out of the canyons, out of the beaches, out of the riverways, out of the streets downtown, off of overpasses, because it's predominantly in the beach communities where you see the bulk of it in downtown area, Mission Hills, North Park and South Park. And, and instead of creating a triage center downtown, which is where all of the services currently exist, with Father Joe's and the Alpha Project, and, you know, you can name all the different projects that are in place already to serve the homeless, they want to move everybody up to this location on Miramar M C A S. They would start out with about, a capacity to hold about five-thousand homeless to begin. They would go to the homeless with this new passage that overturns the, the ruling that said you can't pull people off the street unless you have a bed for them. From now, they're hoping that that won't go away, and you now can go up to people, and if you have a bed, then you can, the police can legally take you off the street and take you to a place that has a bed. So, this is the bed, the location. So, they'd be moving them from downtown up to here. There would be five-hundred beds for single men, and five-hundred beds, tents for single women. There'd be a large roof tent. There'd be facilities for people to, if they want to bring their RVs, and they would be parking in the parks down at Mission Bay, so you can have your RVs there. They also have places where you'd have your storage. You can bring your pets, your dogs. The goal ultimately would be that the triage center concept is that you come in, it's not a locked facility. You would have a place where they could shower. They could have clothing. It all is portable potties and portable showers, because there is no sewer or water to decide. They have garden set up. They have doctors that would take a look at you. There'd be some kind of assessment done, and in theory, that assessment would take place there, and if they thought, okay, you need to be in a lockdown situation, then they would take you over to a mental wing of one of the hospitals and check you in. But, and if you had, and if you have family that's out of state, they're willing to buy you a one-way bus ticket. It will get you back to your home city, home state. That's another option. But, the point that I'm most concerned about is that they gave the figures of, they estimate that citywide, there's about twenty-five thousand homeless existing today. County-wise, there's forty-five thousand, and they want a one-stop camp to house everybody. So, when I asked the question, you're talking about five thousand right now, but are you saying that within this five-hundred acres, you're hoping it would accommodate up to forty-five? Yes, was the response. That it could house forty-five people in a.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand in a tent encampment that would have a fence around it, but they're free to come and go anytime there's not a lockdown. So, they estimate that the cost to run this program would be about two-hundred-and-seventy-five million per year, and their funding is that they want philanthropists to fund the undertaking. So, they're looking into Elon Musk and people like that to ask them to come in, step in and fund this undertaking. They, at one point, at one point, we're looking at Brownfield and Desert Location, but they've settled on the Marine Corps Base because it's closer to being able to bus everyone down to the central urban location downtown to receive their services. So, I think my, my biggest concern about this, which I would think that all the communities along the I-15 corridor would be concerned, is that you have the potential of relocating people that, you know, all the, all the issues and problems that were cited at the meeting by the residents who live in Mission Hills and the beach communities, and thievery and drug use and the trash and everything else that takes place. If you, if you put twenty-five thousand people on a hot, treeless environment, right next to the freeway, right under the flight path of every jet, every helicopter, every offspring, people aren't going to be happy there. People don't like that. And you're saying you can't have any alcohol, and you can't have any drugs, and, you know, here you are with the noise and nothing to do. I see people wanting to probably migrate out and go into the surrounding communities, and just as Bill said, you know, they have a real problem with the school that's in Mission Hills, the elementary kids. You know, no one feels safe about their kids going out, because there's many homeless out on the streets right now. Well, I think the same thing would potentially happen up here, and people who are unhappy there, they don't have the means now to, to go anyplace. They will maybe migrate into all the finger canyons that we have around here and, and filtrate out. And the.
I think that's.
The drugs, the folks who sell drugs downtown, if their population moves up here, guess who's going to be moving where the population is that buys their, their drugs? I, I think what my concern is, I feel, is though it's, it solves the problems for the beach communities in the downtown area, because it gets everybody off the street, and we're just kicking the can up the road to this location.
Do you have to tell any feedback from Kristin Pampere at all? She's mentioned.
So, I, when we.
Seems like the overflow, and that, you know, the sense of habitat.
So, after, after that meeting, I contacted the Scripps Ranch and the Miramasa Chairs, planning board chairs. I also reached out to Brian, which he had sent out a notice about the meeting. And everyone agreed that, no, you know, this is, this is something that Sunbreak Ranch hasn't come to us. So, I said, let's reach out to the base and see if they have contacted the Colonel and what his opinion is. And, and talking with Kristin and the Colonel, they had not, they have not been contacted by this group at all. No one has reached out to them at all, but yet they're making all of these presentations to community groups that, that it's going to be the Marines and the Seabees who are going to finance initially and put up all of the tents. So, the Colonel put out a letter. The Colonel put out a letter immediately and sent it to the city mayor, saying that, you know, this is not a suitable site at all, because we have.
Colonel Paul.
You've got, the letter is attached here to the, the third page, which outlines all of the reasons why, as he says, this is not a suitable location. Lies under the approach corridor. Last wind in the air is for aircraft to crash.
How do they think they would get federal land?
I'm not quite certain how they think they're going to do that. I, I did go on Boyce San Diego right before I left here, because I wasn't going to distribute this letter until I knew that the Colonel was okay with distributing it wherever, because he had sent it to all the council people, as well as to Scott Peters, and I didn't attach that at last page, to Scott Peters and Sarah Jacobs.
All this information and everything else, but if you look into it, it's, it's not a good location. I supervise the New Area of the Ministries for the homeless downtown, and anytime they moved, not so much to San Diego, but a lot of other areas in Nevada, they had a prison. It was a, not a, it was a, a low-income prison in Jean that had several thousand beds, and they decided that they would turn that into a homeless center. And they would have food, cafeteria, and everything else like that. But if you know Jean, it's about thirty miles from Las Vegas, and there's nothing in Jean except a couple of gas stations and a casino. So, they moved the people out there, but after two months, everybody just would leave, because there was no place for them to go and nothing for them to do. They couldn't go out and leave, even though they had three squares a day and a place to live. They wanted to be in Las Vegas. And it's the same thing here. I mean, not to mention all the stuff the Colonel did, but it's pretty isolated. And where would they go during the day if they wanted to do something? They're not going to just stay there twenty-four seven. So, anyway, if there's other meetings, I'm sure Brian has sent a notice to us all, and thanks for the info.
I asked, I asked the committee if they would mind coming, if we could maybe pull together the communities along the I-15 corridor. If they were, they made a presentation to the beach communities downtown, I think they should be making a presentation up here in, for the corridor communities, which would be affected by what they're proposing.
Maybe they could join.
And the Voice of San Diego this evening posted, gave a report on this, and Mullen had, at the very last moment, responded, and his response was that, and I should have printed it, it basically was saying, this is our preferred location. We are looking at other locations, but this is our preferred location, and that there are, there are individuals within the, the federal government military much, much higher than Colonel that they're working with. And that was something that was expressed to me by Kristin, is her concern is that they're trying to go higher above the Colonel, which is not, I mean, that's never a good thing, you know? But I, I think it is something of concern for, I think, our residents, because I think there could be a very significant impact on all of our communities if we were to have a homeless village encampment, because the main problem is that if the triage concept is great, but if you don't have the facilities in place in which you can move them into, then they're just going to be in this encampment, and they're not going to be happy there. They're going to be wanting to leave.
Most homeless don't want to be with twenty-five thousand people, not even if they want to be by themselves.
And someplace, and someplace where they can't do drugs and drink alcohol?
Can I just make a clarification on the numbers? That may have been the numbers they presented in the presentation, and I, I know being in support or opposition of this, but according to the Boyne Time Count, which is definitely an underestimate of homeless people in our community, they even show that countywide, we have just, we have over ten thousand homeless individuals, and citywide, it's just over six, it's sixty-five hundred. So, this is an undercount, but that forty-five thousand number, I'm not sure where that's.
I think they, they are kind of using the number existing right now, that they felt very confident with the number, it was twenty-five thousand countywide, but they felt that that was an understatement.
Do you know their source for that?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I know that they.
Well, I was, I, I read the Boyne Time Count.
When they, when they, when they, when they hit the point count, time count, I think there was like, is it there twenty-seven hundred downtown alone?
Sixty-five hundred in the city of San Diego.
You'd have to see those.
There's sixty-five hundred citywide. There's sixty-five hundred citywide. I think downtown was like twenty-seven hundred or something.
So the, so the plan here says that it's maximum site occupancy at five thousand.
That's because, this, because this is the first phase.
Just the first phase?
This, yeah, this is, that is a very small portion of the five hundred acres that they're going to lease. They're, they're leasing a five hundred acre site in which they can expand into. That's, that's what they're wanting to do. So they can expand up to what they believe the real number is for you that helps.
That's like, that's what they're all-
I have a question. I have a question. I wanna take the, the opposite point of view if I can, the devil's advocate. Because we have lots of homeless that are in Penasquidas. And so it'd be good to have an idea, you know, there would be, if it worked, there would be benefit for being able to move the homeless that are in Penasquidas or Torrey Highlands or Black Mountain Ranch. Do you have any, any idea as to what?
This is just an information, I don't have answers, so.
I was asking, is that, are there benefit? What would the benefit be compared to the-
We have no idea.
I think the benefit, there would be a benefit if you, if you maybe had multiple locations throughout so that it's not all in one central location. And the main benefit is you have to have places to put people. You can't just have them live in an encampment. They need to have resources. They need to have job sources. They need to have places where they can go. They need medical care because they've got diabetes in their type gangrene. They have to be able to go to a hospital. Hospitals are, are hesitant to take a lot of homeless people right now because the discharge requirements are so stringent. Once you take someone in, it's difficult to discharge unless they're one hundred percent A-OK. You know, ready to skip out the door. And, and they run into problems with the financial aspect of caring for everybody when no one can pay. I mean, it's, it's a real complicated issue. And I know downtown, with the redevelopment of the concourse area, you know, that now has to go. First bidder has to be for someone who wants to do low-income housing. That, there's a resource there they could buy town.
This is below the income housing.
Pardon?
This is below the testing.
My impression, I used the article and all I've seen before the email that we had the last couple of days was the idea was that it was, as you're saying, a triage area. It's not intended to be a long-term encampment. It could turn into that, but it's not intended to do that. It's intended to try to get everybody in one spot so they can be triaged and hopefully moved out to other areas or long-term housing, longer-term housing or whatever. Now, is my impression what you're hearing?
That is, that is what, that's their goal, is for it to be that way. But my point is that that only works if you have facilities in which you can place the people.
The concern is it's gonna turn into a long-term-
And you don't have the facilities in which to place people. So that means that the encampment will serve more as a, as a longer term than, you know, you're not, you're not looking at a day or two or a week, you're looking at months or possibly years.
Since this is in our area, I don't know if they'll ever come to us.
Well-
We could, we could.
We're just giving information so that you could rely on the site and stuff like that.
Write a letter to Sarah Jacobs and Scott Peters.
Well, I, I think we have, I think we need to have a presentation by them to come here. I asked if they would come to our planning group because I'd rather do something regional because this is all their volunteer time as well.
They could do Scripps Ranch, Miramasa and ours somewhere if they do it.
And then I think after that-
On Miramar, one of their big buildings.
They're, they're very, very, very active right now. They're really ramping this thing up and they're, they're getting petitions out and they're asking people to sign. And they're going to politicians and they're going to assembly people and space people. And they're saying, this is gonna be the model, not only for San Diego, but it's gonna be the model for the country. And they've gotten on national talk shows, you know, Fox Networks. They've, they've been doing big broadcasts about how this is gonna be the solution for homeless, for the, for the country. And so I just feel like if, if we don't get on board pretty soon to express our opinions and hear the whole story, and, and I'm sure you guys have questions that I didn't think to ask that evening because I, you know, it was a large crowd, so you couldn't ask every question that popped in your head. But it, it is a concern to me, particularly that it's so close to all of our existing canyons. It's right there and, you know. A lot of us were involved back when the Navy was in here and we were doing the comprehensive land use plan update for the Navy. And, you know, this is not ever envisioned to be a place where people would have residences living in that particular area. It's against, it's actually against their landings plan. And I think it would take an act of Congress, actually, in order to do this.
It would take. Well, thanks for the info, we appreciate the heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wireless, Ken?
Uh, nothing on that.
Okay. Communications.
Quick question, John, sometimes you get some, some notice if you can.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Wireless, this.
Do they just-
We- Yesterday, Black Mountain Ranch, Danah Ridge, looks like just a facility that's coming in.
You get that number?
Seems like it.
I keep getting all stuff from the coastal commission.
There was one, I just, saying to Brian, I saw one of their signs up near me at Rubex, at the light Rubex. I think they're just changing the box.
Yeah, yeah, that is, oh, that one was.
We don't need to meet and talk about any of that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Is this new or is this something else?
Uh, this is new. I just-
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I believe it does. I, unfortunately, I did study, just turned all this stuff down. It's Danah Ridge and Black. I can't, what is that about?
Is it a conditional use?
Uh, no, it's a wireless facility. Uh, what, what does it say on there exactly?
And who's the app?
Received another voice from the deep time publisher.
Is this the wireless?
Yeah, thank you.
At Rubex, I'm sorry, I was talking.
Uh, I just mentioned that I saw, it's not this one, but there's another, you know, one of their signs, if you look, it's out there.
A public notice.
Yeah, they're just changing the box or anything. I just, I just mentioned that.
Media and communications, Matt?
Um, the only thing I have is the website is out of date. Just waiting to get the minutes approved. Once we get those approved, I should be able to post them on the website.
Okay. Bylaws.
Here, we need some time. I wanna get some input back from all of you people.
Do you have a report?
Oh, yeah.
We'll give a report, then we'll give you our feedback.
Andrew might be able to explain better, but I'm gonna start and then make sure Andrew can-
You might have to send that report to us or this is it?
It's gonna be verbal.
Okay.
No, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you handouts. Okay, Andrew and I volunteered to be on a bylaws committee about July, August. And then, no, in July, I think it was. And then we didn't really do much about it. And so in September, I said, oh, I think we're supposed to do something. And Brian sent me a email from Ranch Bernardo because they've been working on it since June. There, there were meetings all summer long on what you were supposed to do and why you were supposed to do all this thing. So Ranch Bernardo, correct me if I say anything wrong, invited us to come over at the beginning of, middle of September. And I had a fire safety council meeting, so Andrew got there on time and I got there half an hour, half an hour early. And we stayed for about two hours. And so he, he knows conversations, I don't know. But they were, they, they couldn't believe that, that we would be able to finish by December thirty-first. And so we're going, well, what, what did Ranch Bernardo do? And they, they have, both them and Scripps Ranch have, have, we're not, we're not creating bylaws. We should change our committee name. We're doing terms and conditions for a new organization. This is not bylaws.
Yeah.
This is terms and conditions. And, and, and everyone is wrestling with this. Does, do, do, does this Ranch Penasquitas Planning Board as a plan, as a planning group basically is unrecognized? They didn't know if they became unrecognized December thirty-first. And then when there's a process, let me hand out.
Yeah, so the, the process is basically as of December thirty-first at five P.M., we have to submit our documents.
So this is-
This is an application.
It's basically an application for recognition of the group. They will accept any group's terms and conditions for recognition. They'll review them and then recognize, pick a group that they recognized and recognize that. So the question becomes if they say they're gonna do it within like two months. I kinda laughed at that one, but the, you know, what happens in between that period of time from December thirty-first to whenever they recognize?
I have several copies, it's an artist's passion through. I haven't even studied, they have a term, they came up with a C.D.C. where they talk about terms and conditions. Does anybody have an outline or a frame? Oh, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna, that's what we're gonna get through. So at that point, Andrew and I kind of, you, you learned things. I, I read this big document before I went to the meeting. And it's, and it looked like, it looked like historically, it was bylaws almost like we have, but with whole huge sections of, of terms and, of something new in there. And it was, so it was, it was hard to just read something and decide what was what. And they said, well, what you need to do is you need to go back to this, this, these pages. Someplace in there I have. Go back to these pages and they'll have the whole outline of why we're doing this and what we're doing. And, and it's, you have to give your best and final offer on December thirty-first. You cannot go edit anything after you make your best and final offer. You cannot make any changes.
The city has a boilerplate format, you know, for, for that, if I'm not mistaken.
Should I, should I go?
I think I wrote it this during the summer.
Good, good. I'm gonna give you some of the start of the, Andrew and I stewed about this for the, stewed about this. And then yesterday, we said we'd rather get something for the board to think about. So let me, let me keep one of these for myself. And so we took the template. You can go look at the template yourself. Uh, let me see if I can kinda, this one's a twelve pager, it kinda shaped.
Each one of them is, I'm here with this, makes that you could write.
We haven't done much of anything, but it's, we'll give you all, here, here's the first eight pages. Uh, here's one with the first six pages.
Let's have one at a time.
I could have, I, here's, here's one.
Do you have a question?
Well, what, what, I don't know what you were-
Yeah.
What's the question?
It, it has a series of milestones or basically evaluation process in which, just standing it briefly, it just indicates, does the applicant, the application indicate how the group will engage a broad and diverse cross-section of community members in monthly meetings? So I think, you know, you gotta say-
There's a term and condition in there that, that as the template addresses that. How we modify that particular section is really the question that we're talking about.
Okay, so when I, when I went, I thought, oh, we're gonna do bylaws modification. That was bylaws modification. And I said, I've been through bylaws modifications with Dick Flanagan and with Bransys. You know, when he had those two. And that was our approach, was to take our bylaws that we were used to and everything and go and make a few adjustments here to make sure that we were not out of compliance. And so I've been stewing about that. Is that the right approach?
No, because this is a whole thing.
I think it's a-
So forget the bylaws.
Well, that's what, that's what we want to feed.
Part of it, the bylaws that would do is that we've got districts that would represent the whole community.
It just indicated here, is there a clear framework slash process referenced in bylaws for record management and providing records access to the public? So it appears that bylaws are still current, okay, this is a add-on.
So to, to illustrate, so yesterday, Andrew and I had agreed with a number of feedbacks that we got that we're gonna start with the template. And we are going to go through, and what I want to do right now is point out many, what I think is the changes from the, that are in the template that don't, are not in our bylaws right now. So that anyone, you know, obviously if you top something that was so important that you wanted to buck the template, you should tell us, otherwise we will adapt to the template. And then we will, so our approach, I'm gonna have Andrew probably say the same thing. Our approach, we decided yesterday was to start going through here. Uh, we made a couple of decisions, which were, uh, we decided to continue to call the planning group by exactly the same name we have right now, Ranch de los Penasquitas Planning Board. I checked with Brian, he, he loved that decision because so much of our paperwork and everything is in that. Ranch Bernardo decided at the meeting at the very last moment, they were gonna become a planning group instead of a planning board. So if you want to take a, a quick, quick peek, and I'll go through some of these. Or Andrew, you wanna say anything before?
Do you have that all online?
Yes.
Could you send all of this out to us so we can look at it?
That was another thing we wanted to know.
We might wanna have a special meeting where we go through it after we look at it.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I, it's only twelve pages long.
Okay.
And so some of you have the twelve pages, but I said, the, the back six pages are not that interesting. So I wanted, while you're looking at these, we, we made a decision that we were gonna keep our name.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Well, you are operating it.
It's all for you.
Effectively, the way I, I understand all of this going on is that we're no longer going to be the Ranch Penasquitas Planning Board. We're going to be a group of fifteen individuals that is proposing to do a community planning group.
Yeah.
Submitting that information to the city. We're waiting for them to approve us as the recognized group.
Okay.
Then all those protections would apply.
Okay.
And the interesting thing about all of that, well, and, and the interesting thing is at that time, the clock starts at zero. So nobody has any terms.
It's a new organization.
It's a new organization, completely new. There's no terms, no term limits. Well, the term limits would be in the new document, so you're just all starting at zero.
And then we would, we would select the same areas that we have for representation.
That's what we think. You'll see, you'll see that we, we, let me, let me just show you, we highlight-
That's how we would say we've got the whole community.
Yep. And well, other communities, it's interesting, don't, you know, they want a lot of diversity, they talk about here. And they do a lot of diversity in here based on the forum I'm gonna show you having to do with age, um, race, uh, or income and something else. But then also in other places, in other paragraphs, they talk about they want diversity on whether you have children or don't have children. Whether you, um-
Children living with you or children in general.
Children living with you.
I've got children, I got three of them, but they don't live with me.
But, but there's, there's a whole list of about twenty things that come out of that, that they want. But the, but we're gonna talk, we have to measure, we're gonna have to measure these in our new organization. So if you got, if you can take a look, you'll-
So are these guidelines now defined in the council policy for planning groups, the six hundred dash twenty-four? Is that all now been revised so we can go to that and follow those guidelines?
The templates are online, yeah. So what I would suggest is that you send all that information to us?
No, I'm not gonna send anything to you. We're gonna have it on, what we're gonna have it on, it's all on Google Docs.
And what do you wanna learn there?
Forceps.
It's only, yeah. Do you wanna have a meeting? Do you wanna have a meeting?
And so what I'd like to do is say, if we could get a hold of that and read that for a couple of weeks, if we could have a bylaws meeting, and I could probably get this room or whatever, where we can all look at it first and go through it, and then we'll sit down, I think that'd be a productive meeting.
And I wanna tell you what to look for right now, okay? Let's see, if you, if you wanna say anything before I, take a look at your little pages here. We, you can see where we made some changes. Uh, if you had to actually go out there and look, it's all track changes. So all the deletions and everything are over on the side. I couldn't figure out how to make it print with all, showing all the changes we made. But let me just point out some of, so what- But uh let me just point out some of, so what we started to do is if you look at the very first paragraph, we decided yesterday. That we would use the template and we would go back and look and see if there were parts in the bylaws that we've done. That correspond to some of these sections here and decide that we just say that the template has enough, we don't need to go. Grab that from the bylaws, but those whole things that are missing, I'll show you, there's no description of how to do elections in the template. So, and there's not a one word about a vacancy being a vacancy in this template, so we have to go.
All, all that should be up to us to inform, so the template, uh from my understanding, cause I was tracking this before I got sick and stuff, all the changes to this is. The city wants to basically, originally it was the city created the boards and then said we're independent, but we kinda work for the city council. What they're doing is they're opening up so anybody can take a shot at being the board.
Yep, exactly.
So we can be replaced, so.
Here's, here's what, here's what you got, yeah.
Um the thing is just what we probably should do is we keep our existing bylaws, change um what, uh it's changing city council policies, like the election rules. I think there's a little few things like the term limits change, they define term limits, um stuff like that, I think they put term limits in.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna discuss this.
Yeah, I don't wanna get too far ahead of you.
Okay, I only have about five or six things I wanna make sure you're aware of that are changes. Um and and we kinda highlighted, we went through and highlighted, uh there's two exhibits. One exhibit is we have to come up with this document, here's, we have to do this document, which is Exhibit A, which is community participation.
Excuse me for a minute, uh my wife, it's post-surgery, um I came tonight so we can have a forum, but I've really gotta get home.
We don't have any votes.
We don't have, we don't have. But take, take a copy.
I've gotta copy.
And 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 at the end of the first paragraph, um Andrew and I started to write down I dot one and I, double I dot one from the bylaws. Seem to be.
And you, and you can, you can use this as the basis and then say, you can say, C, Exhibit A, B, whatever. It shows a part of the bylaw or current bylaws that would apply.
So I don't know if we, uh I don't know if we have bylaws.
If, if, that would be a performance.
I think you're on the right track.
The city council will ratify.
Okay, so anyway, I'm, I'm asking your help, that adds to do what you're gonna do, if you can. The, the interest is that you help us, uh note, note, when you look at a bylaw, you said you could help us, tell us, you know, which, which part of the bylaws might. We don't wanna lose something in the bylaws that we need.
Why can't you just refer to the bylaws and take things out, it's just a template?
Why? Because this is going to be the city-approved documents that becomes our bylaws.
And they don't, they're not, the other part of the bylaws is. Huh? Oh, I got Ranch Bernardo's right here, I got four friends in there. Yeah, oh, let me tell you, we knew about this Google Doc. We have uh basically the bylaws and the things for Rancher Peniskitas that we're working on. We also have a folder for Rancher Bernardo, and we have a folder for Scripps Ranch, of what we've got from the draft, so you can see how they thought. I, 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 they made decisions I would not, they decided they're starting to renumber and reorganize the template. And I think personally, we should keep the numbering system as close as possible. If we have something that, that we should need to put in there, we go and see that the last section was two point seven, and we added two point eight or two point nine. And and leave as much as the template give. So we want you to help, help us or or understand what we're trying to do. So we, we put an example on the first paragraph of where we got something from the bylaws.
Stephen, so what you would like us to do is to look at our bylaws and pinpoint where our bylaws already correspond. To information in the template, keeping as clean as possible to the format of the template. So we have a better chance of being accepted as a recognized entity or group, right? And notate the bylaws section within the template to say this is a corresponding.
Exactly.
Okay, now, we don't wanna lose what we worked so hard to put in our bylaws in the past to make Peniskitas work.
So we would add them to this, where it says to do so.
Where we think it says to do so.
Andrew, Andrew can, we can all go to Google Doc and we can have a meet, we don't, we can, you know, he can edit it as we, as we, as we go through it at a meeting here or.
Or. Yeah.
So let me just, so I'm trying to show you what Andrew and I did yesterday, so you can do the same thing. Uh if you turn the page, you go that we have to supply not only this statement that we're gonna do all these strategies. We have to gather demographic data of existing and new CPG voting members. And someplace in here, let me just pass, this, this, when, when we, when we all are elected, we have to anonymously. Voluntarily fill out, there's four or five sheets there, we have to each check a box on those four or five sheets. We don't need your names, but on the other hand, we need to know who you checked it or refused to check it. And then we need to compare that to uh demographic data, I got little one handouts I was gonna give you, but they supplied us with the SADAG data. So we wanna see that our demographics and reports match.
Demographics of our community?
Bingo.
Now, Ranch Bernardo was very jealous of us because they're all white old people on that board. And they said, you are so lucky, Peniskitas, that you've got minorities. I said, well, we need to get them on the board.
He said, we're pretty white old board.
So, okay, let me, so that, that's the demographic, uh flip over, they've changed it so we have to have no fewer than ten members. I believe right now we're twelve, so.
Is there a requirement that, I mean.
I'm on page uh four.
Is there, we have to, do we just have to report our demographics or do you have to? Is there something you can do to ensure that that demographic is met?
We, we have to, we have to publicly state that we're going to strive to meet the equitability of persons on the board. And then we have to report the data. If at some point we're not compliant with, or we're not close to that, it doesn't matter. It's just that we are making the.
Conscious.
So then we'll have to state, we advertise an election, only one person applied for each one and.
More, more, as you read through the last, as you read through the last six pages, they have all sorts of things they would like the board to do to do an outreach.
Sure.
And and Scripps Ranch and Rancher Bernardo just wrote pages after page of all the things they were gonna do in order to change the demographics in their board.
Ranch, Rancher Bernardo actually will go out and they deliver, hand-deliver ballots to people.
Give them, to recruit.
To, to, no, to vote.
Yeah.
Like they'll, if somebody requests a ballot to vote for their, for the planning board, they'll hand-deliver the ballot to the person.
They, they need to be going over to West. Or all younger people.
Okay, wait, wait, here's some more, cause I'm now on page four where it said no fewer than. Uh then, uh with a minimum attendance, you have to have at least, remember it used to be three meetings, four meetings? Nowadays, we have to have at least two-thirds of the regular scheduled meetings. I think we have eleven meetings regularly scheduled. That means eight, you're, you have to go to eight meetings, otherwise you're off the board. And so it used to be four meetings before you got kicked off, now it's, I guess the fourth meeting, that's the same.
So that's a proposal or that's gonna be required.
So well, so that's the, that's the interesting part about all of this, is this is the template, this is what the city is suggesting we do. If we want to change it, we wanna say, no, we only wanna do one-third, we can put that in the terms and conditions and ask for their approval.
They can reject it.
They can reject it.
Ah.
Okay, the next one here is, this is new, this is the complete opposite of the last bylaws change. No attendance requirements for voting member attendance prior to election or appointment as a voting member are allowed. So in the past, we had one requirement, then we went to three requirements, now we're down to zero.
Yeah, just show up.
Show up, you voted in, show up.
Yeah.
Then, now having to do what is a break of service at the bottom, it's a, you must have a two-year break in service. I took a one-year break cause we kinda thought that was enough, two-year break.
After what?
Uh?
After what amount of time?
Eight years.
Okay.
Okay, then on the next page, this is the one that's always.
Can, can you clarify for me, you're, you're pointing out all these areas you think are of concern and you want us to tell you what?
No, these are different from our bylaws.
They're different, so are you proposing that we adopt these or are you proposing that we decide?
We have to look at it.
So you're asking?
We, we need to decide which direction.
But I think we need to do the template and decide that, and then later on, after we're already in, maybe we can make changes once we're already aboard.
That was, that was my other question, can we do that, live with it for a year or two?
Uh it was talking to Ranch Bernardo, they were gonna do all sorts of things that they do without putting it in the, in the terms and conditions, I go, you can do that? Okay, here's, here's one, we've always asked, wondered what it meant to get, uh to be, go beyond your eight years and to get on the board. It explains it very specifically here, and it's still confusing, okay? On, on the fifth page, it says that um, um, that. Uh we, the CPG may develop procedures for waiving the minimum times and the maximum times of service. Uh of its voting members, the CP, if the CPG cannot find sufficient new members to feed, fill the vacant open seats after a good faith effort. Should a CPG choose to exercise this waiver, it will use the following guidelines, I don't know if guidelines is a suggestion or what we're gonna do. It says, number one, ma, waivers and maximum times of service shall be granted not fewer than less necessary to ensure there are ten voting members. So then that would, if we always had enough voting members, no one would ever get extended. Number two, uh waiver of the maximum time of service to ensure that at least ten voting members shall be ratified. So if we only have like eight people running and we needed ten, it says at number two, that um, that, that we need at least ten. That, that can be ratified by at least a two-thirds majority of the votes cast by the eligible community members participating in the regular election. The way I interpret that, is that means we'd have to poll the whole community and have the whole community say, we wanna keep our board going. So we're gonna allow our board to, to um allow, so we've interpreted it differently.
So that's a requirement they want, and these are requirements they want, so we're gonna put them in.
We're gonna do that.
We're gonna put them in, so why are we going over?
Just so everyone understands.
Oh, okay, well, you're gonna, you're gonna go out and look at it, right?
Yeah, I just highlighted the ones that were, and the, and the other one is that if you do serve longer than eight years, you don't get reset to zero. You're always longer than eight years until you get your two, so the next election, you're still, you know, two, oh, two years, still two years. And then here's the last one I highlighted here, I'll let Andrew say something, this is, this was causing some commotion in Rancher Bernardo in the, in five. It says, only one elected CPG voting member for business tax certificate. And the next one is only one elected CPG voting member for property tax billing. So that means no husband and wives can run, no, no children and a wife can run. If you own a property and have all these A D U units on it, you know, nobody in your, in your complex, except apartment.
Building, that is why A P N.
Yeah, so you can't get a whole NIMBY group to get that, right?
Right, so, and and so, and Andrew, let me, if you wanna say anything more about, um, um, so, um, okay.
No, I think, I think we're pretty clear, I mean, we'll provide access to everybody and take a look at the document. We'll continue to go through and make changes to the terms and conditions.
And as you're doing that, just send us stuff, and then I'll talk to Brian and maybe in two weeks. When you're ready, say we've got all our stuff, then we can have a Zoom meeting for everybody, just put our input in.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll, I'll do it in a live version, so that at any point in time, you can look.
We can do it, yeah.
Here's, if.
Does that sound okay?
I think we need to set a date for meetings. We have a goal.
I think you're gonna care.
Democracy.
If you think you're gonna care, uh take one so you have a piece of paper to uh think about this.
What is this one?
Well, th- those are documents that are, that I prepared, it showed the, it shows the procedure, it shows why we're doing this. Oh, so all on this website, same checklist. The last, last question is, we'll give access to anyone.
What, what do you think, what do you suggest, Andrew, about your uh new bylaws? Is it, you, you give access by email, right?
Yeah.
As, as the acting chair, do you authorize anyone on this board to be able to go look at the additions?
They all need to go look at it.
I know, you all.
So we're all authorized, so we'll send it to the whole board.
Do, do, do you want to make edits to it?
Or do you wanna do it?
We want everybody to view it, not to be able to edit it, cause we all need to go over the edits. You guys can.
Do you see this?
Yeah.
But don't let us, don't let anybody go off on the edits, cause you'd never know what they go.
Yeah, we only, you guys are only.
Yeah.
And if you get lost in there, Andrew and I were learning all the techniques.
Do you have emails?
We need everyone's email.
Well, all of them.
Yeah.
Um, will that document, the ten minutes, go put that in a folder?
It's all.
Uh I'm just giving this a case of.
So I propose you, I, I propose that you propose a deadline, otherwise, otherwise.
Oh, I'm gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone for the next ten days, so that gives time for people to review and think about it. See if they have a better idea of how to proceed, or can you just live, can you just live with the template and then, uh.
Wednesday.
You wanna do Wednesday, the eighteenth?
Uh that should be a good night.
Eighteenth of October.
Let me see if I got, that, Wednesdays are always good.
Maybe we need to kind of keep going on it.
I don't think we'll have, he's gone, he's gonna be gone.
Oh, I'll be, I'll be at, at fourteen.
First of November is our next one.
I'll be taking papers with me and I'll be.
We, we probably need to through these by, by this.
No.
Well, just to bid on, as a board, we have to, the board has to say yes.
But we don't know if we have to follow the bylaws to a, to approve the terms.
We'll have a meeting, we'll go through everything, and then we'll say, this is what we'd like to turn in.
To protect you guys, the whole board should be.
You, you understand that it's.
Yes, we understand.
That you aren't really what you're gonna be next year, you're the same people.
But right now, we are, and so we will all say, this is what we wanna turn in as the group that we are.
Well, that part of the question, in the bylaws, when the bylaws change, there's usually had to have a thirty-day review and everything, you know?
That's why we're doing it on the eighteenth.
That would mean that we'd have to have.
But it's not a bylaws change, so it doesn't include that.
But that means we might have to be on December thirty first.
No, it's not a bylaws.
We should plan to, to, to bring it to the December sixth board meeting for a full liveable.
Well, we'd like, we'd like November, the November meeting to know that we made some kind of progress, but that means it's gonna be so, is, is, I may have a big. Cause now.
That's, that's a land use committee, not the board.
October twenty-fourth is a land use committee, and it's not.
Okay, so we'll have time, a little bit of the.
So is that just the eighteen? So, uh the eighteen?
Eighteen?
Yeah, I have.
For, for what, for a working, for a.
Or bylaws.
For a bylaw. Yes, I have my own surgery on the seventeenth.
We just need your comments.
Okay, I can get a meeting before that.
That's what, that's all we need to, to make sure we're.
Unless you wanna, yeah.
Otherwise, Andrew and I will just continue by ourselves and.
Unless you wanna have a meeting before the board meeting on the first.
No.
Have a subcommittee meeting on the first.
Well, it's a meeting, it's a call to her, we have to notice it. Well, it's a work.
No, it's a work.
It's a bylaws committee meeting, just like. Uh?
We'll have a forum in the meeting.
There's only two of us on the committee, so we are more.
It's an advisory group.
Yeah, no, so you could hold the meeting and we, and we could work it out then.
My, my understanding of this is technically, we, we don't have to follow any of those rules. We don't have to have forums, we don't have, this is just a group.
Oh, it's just a group getting together.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was gonna say is, um, do we have anybody?
I was gonna say is, um, do we have anybody who can give us like free legal advice? Cause that's, that wasn't one of my biggest.
All I talked about is how.
City doesn't provide us with any legal advice.
Well, I did get one from Brian. I said, do we have anybody who's who's fit against us?
Well.
Yeah, that, that was.
So is the eighteenth good for everybody?
What time? We got to pick.
What time?
Uh, it's. All times, six thirty and go as soon as people can come.
Okay, the eighteenth, six thirty.
We'll just be here for a long time and then when people come.
We'll be on seven.
I think.
That way we can all look at what we're doing.
Do you think it's best for us to be on Zoom, so, so we say at home on this?
Yeah, it'd be easier because then we can see what he's doing and what the changes he's inputting, and we're all looking at the same stuff that we go through.
And I'd advise if you could get two monitors up or three monitors up with your laptop.
Just need one.
We can do one for the Zoom, one for the document, one for the, for your reference, for your sources that you wanna refer to.
Okay, thank you. So we're all, okay, six thirty on the eighteenth?
Um, I, I will provide my comments ahead of that. I will not give attendance on that.
Okay.
And then we'll make a decision at that point if we wanna leave to do the next one.
Yeah.
We can do a follow-up. And, and we, we, we appreciate your help.
I, I'll volunteer to help you guys out, so if you want a third member.
You gotta talk to the, uh.
He could, you set up the Zoom.
You can set up.
I can set up the Zoom, I can do all the technical stuff and.
Set up, set up Zoom, mom.
And I'll, I'll try and see, uh, cause I.
You're gonna need to be your technical support.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to see if I can find a lawyer.
Thank, thank you. I can school him about it.
We don't need a lawyer.
I can school him about it.
What do we need a lawyer for?
Uh.
Never why ask a question you don't already know the answer.
When the, when the city chooses and fails to choose us, it's the city's problem.
Yeah, you don't need to, you don't need to talk to a lawyer.
Well, I, I mean.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
When, they had a presentation on this at the CPC meeting a few months ago. And there was a lot of concern on the demographic data. It's anonymous, but it's public, was the conclusion. So, you know, based on how many attributes there are, you know, the, the word publicity could be personally identified.
Terms and conditions are separate.
And, uh, they never define what, how they're going to determine statistically how they're gonna determine, you know, how our group's answers related to the, the population of the sand, uh, GIs, stuff.
They're, they're gonna do two things on that. One is they're going to aggregate each individual.
Right.
Question, so there's no way to say, hey, this person is white and makes a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but someone does a public records request, they might don't get.
No, you can't, because the way that they have it set up is you fill out individual slips and you throw those all.
Yeah, but if you're the only e- representative of, of an ethnic group, you know, you'd be honed in on, was the concern.
Yeah, and I don't have concern. The reason is that we're, right now, until December thirty first, we're the Ranch Pineskiers Planning Board. What we are now is we're a group that's filing to be something else. So right now, we're acting as a group of individuals, filling out the forms for the city to say this is what we wanna do.
Hey, just, so, that's, second, there's, there's two points to what I'm saying. One is everything's gonna be aggregated. The second point is, they do go in there and they say, you can voluntarily submit the data.
Right.
So you don't technically have to submit the data. They want you to encourage the submission of the data.
And, and, um, I was gonna amplify that. They're only using this data to rank one applicant against another applicant. So if we're the only applicant, which I suspect there's a ninety-nine point nine percent probability of, um, there's no one to rank against, so.
Unless they decide to. I think it is, you, you, and Steve, you probably recognize, when being at the CPC, when you get down in some of these other planning groups, they get pretty.
So.
Yeah, and there's a lot of diversity.
But these terms and conditions were not written for us. They're written for problems that are going on downtown. Or they have a commercial group that wants to be the planning group, and they have resident groups that wants to be the planning.
And they wanna put in twenty-four stories.
Right.
Yeah.
So don't take anything personally.
Right, doesn't, doesn't specify that we have to use all those demographic categories, does it? It just says you have to gather demographic data. We can create our own survey on what our demographic data is.
And they give it to us.
They, they wanna compare it to that data set that they supply.
Right.
They should be suited along, you know, roster.
So that's the same data.
I suggest that when, when you get out there, go look to see how Scripps Ranch interpreted, what they're gonna do. Go see how Ranch Bernardo, cause they went to the meetings and they got all the lectures about what they're.
Extraordinary Benefits Committee, we have a committee, we're gonna be here in the next two or three weeks, so we'll get back with you. Black Mountain, Open Space Park?
Oh, um, I don't know.
Okay, Community Funds?
Um, no, community news.
Okay, Community Planners Committee?
There is a lot of stuff. I won't go into a tremendous amount of detail, but the, the biggest thing that came out was a housing action plan to point out. And there hasn't been any consensus on it, but there was a motion to go ahead and, uh, make sure that the portables kept on site. That there is no lesser neighborhood, um, in there. There'd be, they have concerns over the FARs, uh, the highest resource and the highest resource areas. They have to remain instead of just in the fees. You gotta keep them within that area that the, it's gonna be of influence. Um, keep in the, uh, no missing middle incomes and then keep the dip fees, that you can't just avoid them and for over. Then it's, it's ridiculous that you, you know, you wanna increase the density, but you don't have to pay fees.
Yeah.
And so what you do with all that infrastructure, that's a bad. So, and then, but that, it doesn't necessarily mean that everyone supports the housing action. And that's all with AB, uh, ten, there's.
Oh, okay.
Yes, B ten?
Yes, B ten, thank you again. And then, oh, the last one, so with all of that, so these days, uh, somebody else started distributing this Series Fifteen Regional Forecast for Sand Day. And, yeah, so, uh, from twenty twenty-three, uh, all the way through twenty sixty, there is not gonna be a population increase, um, at all. Don't count the selected bits. Why do we have to densify? Why there's gonna be additional increase?
We need more houses, but we, we have fewer people in each of our houses.
Eight years.
I mean, the problem, I have no children to live with me, so I need twice as many houses.
I mean, you did it right.
Leave them.
I have one that's back, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, Miramar?
Uh, we had an airshow, uh, uh, we had two VIPs that went. John and I were VIPs that went.
Oh, that was a great show.
And then I had a couple of requests for more VIP parking passes from other people. So next year, let me know if you wanna be a VIP.
Yeah, no, it was great.
Was that the Friday?
I went on the Friday, you went on the Saturday.
I went on the Saturday.
Oh, okay.
Went, went down to another event downtown and then came back to the officer's club.
There you go.
Well, did you stay for the dance? And they had dances and activities till midnight for the VIPs.
Yeah, yeah, no, at the, at the officer's club.
Next year, get the whole day, uh, free, so you can just.
Talk to, yeah, talk to the Colonel.
Since you were there, uh, and you're on the Fire Safety Council, do they take care of the flyers?
Oh, I, I was on Friday. That was Sa- was Saturday, John was a fire.
Oh, okay.
But I was on the Fire Safety Council, which is at the next item?
Yes.
Uh, we, I couldn't go on Saturday because we had a fire safe, uh, town council event at the library. And we did it, Mike decided to do it, so it was more of an informal, we got the fire engine, we got kids that would come to the library and do that. Instead of having lectures, the, the Venice for good lectures that I love, we did, uh, we got a number of organizations. And then the people in the, uh, room asked the questions they were interested to about, um, uh, um, about, about, um, insurance and about, um, uh, brush cleaning and about those kind of things. And so it was, it was a new format and it, it worked out.
True.
We should've, somehow told that we didn't, really get the flyers out in the last minute, otherwise I think we could've gotten a lot of kids to come and spend time for, for firetruck.
Recreation Council?
Um, we, uh, we passed the, uh, GNIK management for the, uh, uh, tennis center expa- expansion. Three new tennis courts, a new clubhouse, and, uh, a couple of construction courts.
We'll get the ball.
Uh, no pit wall. And, uh, um, so that then, uh, will go to the, uh, Park and Rec Board. Uh, hopefully we'll have that before the end of the year.
Okay. Park and Rec.
Uh, we finally got our delivery Jeanette was very involved with it and, uh, gave her, I think a spring ankle or something in there for a lot of boulders that we had placed. So we just tried to emphasize.
No spring ankle back problem for three years.
Just your back, and I think.
Poison oak?
I thought it was poison oak, but I, I don't think it was. We can sell pictures of it, like poison oak, but.
It's all those little mosquito bites.
I don't know why that was.
Yes, nineteen seventy-eight, I was on the committee to put the preserve in, and we were doing geology, all these geological surveys for mapping and things. And, uh, all of those, us that did the mapping, we changed the name to Poison Oak Canyon. Cause there is poison oak everywhere. And when I used to do nature walks down there, I couldn't keep the kids out of it.
I wanna, yeah, just thank Jeanette for all she's done on that road and how.
And John.
And John.
John, John and I have been doing that for thirty years.
Yeah, and those, the trails have been pretty successful, and even a lot of people, when we're placing a lot of these, uh, trail heads, people are come and die that are walkers and really, you know, offering a lot of kudos. So we got some new, new names and numbers that we want to, uh, advance some other things or get other, we can bring more people into that group, so.
That brings me to the.
To the pile.
The pylons. Yes. Can, can we make a statement as a board of?
I, yeah, there's a lot of controversy.
There's a lot, I, I, I think it negates all of what you guys did.
It does.
It's not necessary, so I don't, I don't know, I don't wanna make a statement, but I guess what I find is visual, it itself, I just have to get this.
We can maybe in the transportation group, make a comment, that's right, to, uh, see how that work can be done.
There you go, talk to Ken.
Yeah.
Hello, kids? Can you skate those heat, yeah?
Uh, I've heard nothing.
Okay, Tori Fine?